Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 8th Caribou City Council Meeting. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of the Leading.
Pledge of the Leading. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number three, public forum. Is there anyone wishing to speak from the public? Yes, ma'am. If you could please grab the microphone and state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Aiken, and I'm here on behalf of the Caribou Ecumenical Food Pantry. On Saturday, March 16th, the Caribou Ecumenical Food Pantry, which has been in operation for almost 22 years, sustained major water damage due to melting snow on the roof. After many hours, which turned into many days of trying to control the water to no avail, it was determined that we would have to find a new and safer location. We were forced to close the following week as pantry volunteers worked to move product to a drier space and remove soggy boxes, all the while trying to deal with the water that was pouring in. It wasn't safe for clients or staff to be on the premises. I would like to digress here for a moment and point out how important the service of this pantry is. Ordinarily, when we are open on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we serve approximately 15 clients each day. That number may fluctuate a bit depending on the need and if there is a major holiday like Thanksgiving. The following week, when we were able to reopen, on the Tuesday, we prepared and served 21 clients. On the Thursday, we served 30 clients, and several were turned away. Most weeks, we have two to three new clients, and in this particular week, we had 10. After many phone calls, a possible space at the city-owned property of the former Macon Building on the access highway was found to be a suitable venue. Board members and volunteers went in and cleaned the area that would be ours, washed curtains, and generally prepared for our moving in. An electrician was called to make sure there were adequate receptacles and power to accommodate our many freezers and refrigerators, and plans were made for the volunteers and vehicles to move the pantry. The cleaning was all done in goodwill with the belief that the things that needed fixing would be done as soon as possible, possibly even prior to our moving in. The only thing we knew that was left to do was to sign a rental agreement with the city council. The main issue that had to be rectified was the plumbing. The damage was caused because the building had not been winterized properly and pipes had broken. A plumber determined that it could cost up to $7,000 to restore water and plumbing to the facility. Needless to say, we were extremely disappointed when the rental agreement stated that the pantry should pay the $7,000 plumbing bill, plus, if the building was sold during the one-year lease, we would be asked to vacate in 45 days. In addition, we would be responsible to pay for any damages that occurred in our area, whether it was a window that was broken while they were cutting the grass or repair any leaks in the roof. The council members all know there is already a fund of $91,000 set aside for repairs to the facility, but they did not want to spend the money for plumbing. They were looking at fixing the roof instead. Each year, the city pays all the expenses of telephone, internet, heating, and power for the Nylander Museum, costing taxpayers approximately $10,000 to $15,000 per year. I believe the museum should be open, and I don't take offense to using taxpayers' dollars. I understand that you don't want to spend any more money on a property that you want to sell. But I would like to ask each councillor why you think it is fair to expect a nonprofit organization, a food pantry, that urgently needs a viable venue to feed the hungry children, seniors, and others who perhaps voted for you, to pay such a price when you freely and willingly pay for a museum? The pantry is a Christian-based organization that relies on $200 per month from five churches, volunteers, and generous donors for their income. We also do one major fundraiser per year, a spaghetti supper. The rental amount you suggested is most agreeable, and we are willing to pay for any damage that we cause to our area, such as burnt-out light bulbs and keeping the space clean, but we simply cannot afford to pay for any damage that is beyond our control, such as a leaking roof, which is already suspect. We are presently closed until we can find a suitable location. And I'm asking, is there any way council can reconsider rewriting a rental agreement for us, excluding the plumbing repair and asking us to be responsible for damages to the property that are not under our control? There are many seniors and families who rely on our help. Please reconsider this agreement and let us rent this space at $1,300 per year, be responsible for our own damages, and allow us to continue our mission to serve the hungry people of our community. Thank you. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
How much were you paying for rent?
We paid $350 just for the rent, then we paid our own power and telephone.
$350 a month?
$350 per month, yes.
I supported you, by the way.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. We certainly feel it's a very worthwhile service that we provide. May I offer you a copy of the statement that I just read?
Yes, ma'am. Could you pass him to Jane, please? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
I just have one. I hope we can resolve this tonight. I know, I don't think it's on the agenda, but I would hope maybe under other business or something that we could resolve this tonight so that they could get going and get over with.
Any other comments? Ma'am, I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Yes, sir.
The first time we heard the bathroom issue was an issue was the night the camera came on. We thought it was a done deal. And $7,000 to come at us, to come at the council, I found too quick. I think the council has agreed that we're going to take care of the plumbing. We're seeking quotes. I think we're trying to figure out what to do with that darn roof. But I think everything you've asked for is going to come. But we just have to go through the process of getting some quotes, understand who's in charge of the maintenance of these bathrooms, who's going to pay for the heat to keep the bathrooms. We just need to work our way through it. Not a councillor here thinks that you have to pay for the bathroom. It was a standard document that just came in front of us. And we thought it was a done deal. So alls I can ask for is patience.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We understand that it takes time for all these things to happen, so we understand.
It just came at us out of nowhere. That's all I meant. Thank you.
Thank you.
But sometimes when someone's on life support, you can't wait too long. I mean, I think, I think we could have let him in there sooner, but that's just me.
They're already in there.
Okay, that's... Any other, anybody else from the public would like to speak, please? Okay. Thank you very much. Item number four, minutes from the regular city council meeting held February 25th. Chair will entertain a motion. Moved and seconded. Any additions, corrections, subtractions, modifications? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5B, Spirit of America Recognition. Joan Terrio.
A resolution recognizing the 2019 Caribou Spirit of America Foundation Tribute. Whereas there are many individuals and groups who selfishly volunteer their time, talents, and means to lift up the hands which hang down, secure the weak, strengthen the feeble knees, comfort the grieving, instill hope for a brighter tomorrow, and even lend extra muscle to the labors necessary to maintain civility, culture, and community. And whereas the Spirit of America Foundation was organized in Maine to commend community service and promote volunteerism, and whereas the city council desires to honor some of those citizens and groups who faithfully volunteer within the community. Now therefore, be it resolved in sincere gratitude and appreciation that the following individuals and groups are hereby recognized for their exemplary citizenship and outstanding achievements and honors brought upon this community with the 2019 Caribou Spirit of America Foundation Tribute. And as I read a little short item on each volunteer, if you would come forward to get your certificate. Barbara Aiken. Mrs. Barbara Aiken is a true gem in the Caribou community. She is kind, caring, selfless, and genuine. Mrs. Aiken is always first to volunteer and never denies an opportunity to help others. First, Mrs. Aiken is the reason that the Caribou Parks and Recreation Department can continue the holiday tradition of gingerbread house decorating. Mrs. Aiken and her band of volunteers assembled 250 houses for children to decorate. It takes nearly a week to build the houses and portion out the candy, and the tradition has been going on for 20-plus years. Mrs. Aiken also donates her time to the Ecumenical Food Pantry. She contributes home-baked goods to fundraising efforts for Cary Medical Center's Ladies Auxiliary. She also sews pillows for the ladies auxiliary that are used to help surgical patients in recovery. She is active in her church, cooking for church suppers to raise funds for the local food pantries. Mrs. Aiken demonstrates that giving time and energy is no real sacrifice.
Thank you so much.
Ma'am, after all of the things are read and the minutes, maybe they might have a big follow-up with the council behind it, which is...
Bill Flag. Mr. Bill Flag is the Director of Community Relations and Development for Cary Medical Center in Caribou, Maine. Mr. Flag embodies the spirit of America with his passion for the Caribou community. He is always the first to volunteer for groups and organizations that need help, and his creative ideas for improving quality of life contribute to what makes our community so unique. The nominator began working with Mr. Flag as part of Recovery Arista, and his kindness and compassion was contagious. He was instrumental in Caribou being recognized as an age-friendly community in 2018, making a better place for everyone who lives here. He has also worked hard for Maine Vets and CARL and is currently trying to get the funding needed to open a women's sober house in Caribou. This is just the tip of the iceberg. The Caribou Rotary Club. Caribou Rotary Club has been a positive force in the Caribou community. Some of the community groups they've supported with volunteer hours and funds include the Local Soup Kitchen, the Caribou Performing Arts Center, Caribou High School Ski Program, Sharps Program Bike Helmets for Kids, Local Boy Scouts of America Youth Exchange Program, the Caribou Wellness Center and Recreation Programs, Veterans Memorial Playground Equipment for Multiple Parks, and many others. The generosity of the club members has truly made Caribou a better place in which to live. Channel X Radio. Thirty-three years ago, Dennis Curley founded Channel X Radio. His vision was community-driven, to focus on and promote local people and businesses and to deliver up-to-the-live-minute coverage of local, regional, and national news, sports, weather, and community events while employing local talent. Today, Dennis's vision remains. Channel X Radio remains locally owned and operated and serves Arusta County and Western New Brunswick. Christina Kane Gibson. Christina Kane Gibson is the Caribou Marketing and Events Coordinator and goes well above and beyond the call of duty. She spends countless hours helping Caribou present events that are family-oriented and business-friendly. She works closely with volunteers who provide numerous hours to support events, such as the Caribou Marathon, Caribou Days, Halloween Festival, Gingerbread Festival, Daddy Daughter and Mother-Son Dances. In 2018, she helped organize business owners and stakeholders to create the Downtown Alliance Group, which is working to revitalize the downtown business area. Working to make Caribou a better place is not just her job, it's her passion. She truly exhibits the spirit of America.
She's actually down at the Governor's Conference on Tourism, receiving another award tonight, and so we'll make sure she gets this.
Constance J. Micho. Connie Micho was hired by the City of Caribou and started work April 7th, 1986, and on April 8th, 2019, today, 33 years and one day later, she will be retiring. For 30 of those years, she was truly the face of Caribou, as her workstation was located just inside the main entrance at City Office. Connie is calm, patient, and thorough. She treats everyone that she serves in the same polite manner. She is always looking out for the taxpayer and what works best for them. Connie is very active in her church. She's modest, humble, and private about her involvement in her faith. Truthfully, she is genuine, insightful, and one of the nicest and kindest individuals in Caribou. Dr. Valerie Ann Waldemarsen. Dr. Waldemarsen and the Jobs for Maine graduates and National Honor Society students always heed the call for help and donate countless volunteer hours to the City of Caribou Events and Marketing Department. They have been integral parts of the Caribou Marathon, Caribou Arts and Crafts Fair, Halloween at the Caribou Wellness and Recreation Center, Small Business Saturday, Santa's Workshop, and the Holiday Shop for Children, just to name a few. In addition to her work for the city, Dr. Waldemarsen consistently collaborates on and initiates service projects designed to better our community, including food pantry donations, a community cupboard project, raising funds to send children to camp, hosting business forums and local job fairs, giving Tuesday events, Small Business Saturday, and fundraising for the Anishrainers. Dr. Waldemarsen continuously brings positive recognition to the city of Caribou, Caribou High School in RSU 39, and was named Bangor Metro's 2018 Person of the Year and Maine Jump Start Coalition 2018-19 Financial Educator of the Year. Dr. Waldemarsen is a civic leader and a true mentor to the students in her care. She embodies the principles of 2019 Caribou Maine Spirit of America Foundation Tribute Honor.
That's okay.
Hers is missing. Mrs. Christina.
Roger Felix. Roger is the Business and Community Liaison at Lawrence Job Corps. He assists with student government and honor guard. He is the commander of Caribou VFW, volunteers at Maine Veteran Cemetery, and has made honor flight journeys as a chaperone numerous times. He is retired from the United States Army and has dedicated his retirement years to helping veterans get the services and recognition they deserve. He is the spirit of America. Sean Pelletier. As a business owner, founder of Brian's Ride, and member of our community, Sean strives to make Caribou a better place to live. From senior living accommodations to Northern Maine brewing, his vision is inspiring and actions are involving.
Group photo? If you could all come up front?
I'm a special guest.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Joan, Dave. Item 5B, Caribou High School Choir Honors. Nicole.
The All-State Vocal Jazz and Show Choir Festival was held at Lawrence Junior Senior High School Complex on Friday, March 29th, 2019, and Saturday, March 30th, 2019. Caribou High School qualified for the event and sent choirs in both competition categories. They competed against seven other schools from around the state. Caribou, Holton, and Easton were the only schools from Arusta County to participate. The show choir, which included over 50 students, performed songs from the play Dear Evan Hansen. The choreography was directed by the students themselves. The choir came back with a silver award and a third place overall. Senior Austin LaPlante was given an Outstanding Musicianship Award, and several other students were awarded a Level 1 and 2 certificates. The choir was directed by Ms. Vicki King. The jazz choir ensemble, which included many of the same students, came back with a bronze award in the jazz category. The jazz choir was directed by Ms. King and Mr. Von McLaughlin.
We brought it up. I mean, but it looks like this is really large right now. Sometimes when I close in, it changes the size, and then I'll be able to see it. Students, would you stand up and identify yourselves and show our awards and say what you would like to say about the experience?
Yeah, so my name is Christopher Parent, and I had the opportunity...
Could you grab the microphones, young man? Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Christopher Parent, and I was fortunate enough to be able to solo in the show choir portion of our experience. It was honestly amazing. It's probably my favorite time going down. I've went down five or six times now over my high school and middle school career. And overall, this year was a new atmosphere for us, since we're going to a new school. Since we've had the last three or four years at the same school, changing this year was completely different. We had a completely different auditorium and gym to perform in. It was a very fun time. We always have fun going down. We had the opportunity to go down a night before because we were performing earlier in the day. And overall, we did our best, and the soloists, I say, we all did a good job. So I'll let Austin talk now, since he got an award.
I'm Austin LaPlante. I received the Outstanding Musicianship Award for the show choir portion. I'd say it's a fantastic learning opportunity and experience. It's going down and seeing all these different groups, performing all different kinds of music, and seeing all these fantastic musicians doing what they love to do. You can't help but go away from there, learning something from one of them. It, I don't know, it's just an amazing opportunity to experience.
We have some pretty wonderful students here in Caribou. As many of you know, some former students as well. I mean, I've been here a while. I find that when I hit this to go to full view, it's gonna do something weird, so I'm just gonna play it from here, if you don't mind watching it in the right corner. And behind this is our Hostel Jazz Choir singing "Here's That Rainy Day." And the soloist happens to be in the room, Isaac Markner. So I apologize for that not being exactly like it's supposed to, but that's technology and nobody cares, so... It truly is a great experience for our kids to go down to the festival, wherever it is.
Microphone, please.
Oh, sorry.
I don't usually need to be amplified. It's a very good experience for our students to be able to go down and see what schools throughout the state are doing. We got to have middle schoolers in the festival the day before, and there were actually 18 middle school show choirs performing, and ours did very well. They had a silver rating. These students have worked tirelessly in lots of their areas of... Not just music. They're all very good students as well and good athletes.
I didn't work out how to do it though. Christopher, you might have to stand back. Austin, come on up.
How should I hold it?
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, all.
I'd also like to point out to you guys that Austin's an Eagle Scout. I've gotten his Eagle Scout a couple of years ago. He taught my boys how to tie knots, and I'm glad he was there.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5C, 2019 Limerick Contest Winner, Nicole.
On March 19, the library celebrated our second annual limerick contest with limericks and Irish music. We had 16 participants ranging in ages from five years old to older adults. This year, our winners were Roy Sear, elementary; Connor Albert, sixth through 12th grade; and Larry Boober, adult. Limericks were read, treats were tasted, and ribbons won. Everyone had a wonderful time. Attached are some of the limericks from the event.
I think we have the winners here tonight to read their own limericks.
Perfect. Yeah, two of them. Okay. Connor. Perfect.
Connor, would you state your name, please, your full name?
Robert Connor Albert.
Thank you.
I once knew an anxious midget. He was aptly named Sir Fidget. He'd twist his thick beard counting things that he feared, reaching quite an absurdly high digit.
My name is Larry Boobar. I won the old people one. Being the oldest guy there, they figured they better give it to me now. I might not be able to participate later on. So anyway, people should never throw stones, especially in plastic zones. If their aim is not so great, it may be their fate for it to bounce back and break their own bones.
Group photo?
They'd like a photo.
You're gonna have to have two sections in the Republican.
Well, we need another section. It's pretty strict, isn't it?
Why don't you go up there as the librarian?
Yeah, you're the librarian, hope.
Dennis, can you get the cover?
A little too much stuff. Move down a little.
I can't quite see Joan for my picture.
Oh, we got one. Just a minute.
One more, sorry, sorry.
Congratulations.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Item 5D, Award Bid for High Street Repaving Project. Dennis.
As you are aware, counsel, the DOT is working to finalize their contract for High Street work, and the DOT side of the work is on the north side of High Street, and they'll be repairing the storm drain system as well as ripping up part of the pavement. On the south side of the street, we would like to piggyback on the contractor's work while they're in the area, and what we would like to do is have the street basically re-sloped, so there'll be a lot of the pavement coming up, and then new pavement being laid back down, as well as a new sidewalk on the south side, similar to what DOT is going to be doing on the north side. We put our work out to bid. We received three bids. They were from Trombley Industries, Soderberg Company, and Northeast Paving. The low bidder was Trombley Industries at $136,547.50. Trombley Industries is also the same company that was the low bidder for the DOT work. At this time, DOT has, they have not yet signed contracts for the High Street work. They are still working through the process with DOT to make sure that all the bid and all the bonding information, all the insurances are appropriate for the work. We've been told from multiple sources that should be done in the next couple of weeks. And so tonight, we would recommend that any awarding of this bid for the city work be contingent upon DOT moving forward with their work as well. We do recommend awarding the bid to Trombley Industries.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion that we award the project to Trombley Industries contingent on DOT's.
Moved and seconded to accept Trombley Industries' low bid contingent on High Street and the state. Any questions, comments, problems? Hearing none from the council, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number seven, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Renewal of Rubbish Hauler Permit for McNeil's Trucking. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to accept a renewal of rubbish hauler permit for McNeil's trucking. Is there any comments, questions, issues? We all got the information in the package? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those, well, there is none opposed. Motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the liquor license for Northern Maine Brewing Company. Anything to say, Dennis?
I was just gonna say, the chiefs and code enforcement officer have signed off on it. It's just a renewal. Moved to renew?
Seconded. Moved and seconded to renew the liquor license for Northern Maine Brewing Company. Is there any discussion, comments, issues? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 7C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Acceptance of the Library Memorial Fund Donation. Good evening.
Good evening. The library received a memorial donation of $9,771, I think 62 cents, to set up a fund, a trust, in the name of Phil Turner, Philip Turner. And you guys have to say yes, you want the money, so.
Any questions, comments?
Cite A.
Moved and seconded to accept a memorial fund donation from an honorable Phil Turner.
That's right.
Who was quite the author. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Item 7C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Acceptance of the Library Memorial Fund Donation. Good evening.
Good evening. The library received a memorial donation of $9,771, I think 62 cents, to set up a fund, a trust, in the name of Phil Turner, Philip Turner. And you guys have to say yes, you want the money, so.
Any questions, comments?
Cite A.
Moved and seconded to accept a memorial fund donation from an honorable Phil Turner.
That's right.
Who was quite the author. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 7, Discussion Regarding Fire EMS Department Budget. I asked to have this put on the agenda. I am going to take it off the agenda for tonight. We have decided to set up a workshop session down the road in the immediate near future. It's a great time to have, there's been a couple of graphs that went out and a comparison's gone out. We all have our budgets, the projected budget, and any other issues or questions that you'd like to have answered prior, just email Dennis, and we'll get them onto the table. Does anybody have anything to say? Well, I do. Could I have a copy of the detailed expense budget? We have the summary, we have the two, whatever it was.
Right.
Can we have that broken up into details for each item?
For 2019?
Yeah, for two, projected, yeah. I just wanna, not, just wanna understand the lines on it. I'm particularly curious, I want to make sure that the council, and I'll say it, me, that I understand the flow of the two leases that we have on the books. One deals with a fire truck, and one deals with the pellet boilers. How those get into the part that is included, how it gets into these different departments, and this would be a good one to start with. Under what line item do they get placed in there? So I'd be interested in that narrative.
Date to be determined tonight?
We're gonna, I'll call people. We'll just see what we have on our schedule for about another three weeks is what we'll try to schedule it for. But we'll come up with a good time in the very near future. Not sure when yet. Does anybody have any problem with?
Anything that has Tuesday. Tuesday's perfect for me, activities with children and everything else.
Okay. It's too bad we couldn't have one council meeting and then two weeks later have the workshop. You know, I'm just trying to see how things work out. We'll determine it in another week when we're gonna have the workshop.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion and possible action regarding the Nylander Museum Reserve Account. Wow, they just got $9,000.
That was the library?
That was the library.
Sorry.
You can give me more money.
I got excited.
I'm totally amenable.
I got excited there. Jeez. Okay. Dennis?
So the council asked us to do a little more research into the two reserve accounts that we have labeled as Nylander Museum, and what we found, there are two accounts totaling roughly $14,000. The one account has been on our books for many, many years. Very little money has gone out of it. It appears that what was happening was the city would take any unexpended balances that were budgeted toward the Nylander at the end of the year, and they would put it into the reserve account for future use. The $2,000 account appears to have been a donation from a law firm that was received, again, many years ago, that had no specified purpose other than for the museum itself. And so we are recommending that we combine those two accounts into one reserve account, and that it be utilized for the city, not for, not for programs or operations, but general maintenance and capital needs at the museum. In order to consolidate those, we need the council's blessing.
Any questions, comments?
I just have one question. Where would the money come for the programs? Which account would that come out of? Because this, this right here only takes care of the actual maintenance and capital projects, but not for operation or program. Where's that money?
The city has a separate budgeted account under our, under our fund one, yes, for those activities.
So if we needed maneuver, that's where this would come out of?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Any other questions or comments? Who seconded that? Anybody?
Dave.
Okay.
Counselor Martin.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Vote.
Thank you. Motion carries. Number eight, Old Business, Ordinants and Resolutions. Discussion, 8A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding DOT Construction Overlimit Permit Agreement. Dennis, anything to say?
So you have in your council packet a request from DOT to basically utilize the city's roads as part of their construction projects on Route 1. They have actually two projects planned for Route 1 this year. One is on the north of town, basically from the roundabout north into corner, and that will be a milling project and a resurface, or putting down bonded treatment surfaces between, or in that length. And then the other is, they'll be going from Prescott out to Caribou, and redoing Route 1 in that area. And so this, the overlimit permit would allow DOT to access our local roads that might have weight limit requirements on them, and we would be agreeing to issue permits or waivers to those trucks being on our local roads, so they could do that, but we would also be able to require bonding and repair of those roads if we identify any damage that's caused by the contractor.
Chair will entertain a motion. Moved and seconded to approve the agreement with MDOT for Route 1 project. Any comments, questions, issues? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 8B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Seasonal Weight Limits on Local Roads. Dennis?
Our, there was questions about what the ramifications were for putting weight limits on local roads, what kind of exemptions there were for farm traffic or other things, and the discussion, one of the questions was where are the roads that will be with the weight limits? And so in the packet, there was a map that showed, we're looking at the Albert Road on the north end of town, the Plant Road, the West Gate Road, which is the Sawyer Road south of the highway, Thompson Road, the Railroad Street down between the Route 1 and the river, Dow Siding Road, a very small section of road down by the Motor Inn, and also the Maysville Road on the south end of town. The limitations would be in place basically until the spring thaws occurred. so they could do that, but we would also be able to require bonding and repair of those roads if we identify any damage that's caused by the contractor.
Chair will entertain a motion. Moved and seconded to approve the agreement with M D O T for Route 1 project. Any comments, questions, issues? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you very much. Item eight B, discussion and possible action regarding seasonal weight limits on local roads. Dennis?
Our, there was questions about what the ramifications were for putting weight limits on local roads, what kind of exemptions there were for farm traffic or other things. And the discussion, one of the questions was where are the roads that will be with the weight limits? And so in the packet, there was a map that showed, we're looking at the Albert Road on the north end of town, the plant road, the West Gate Road, which is the Sawyer Road south of the highway, Thompson Road, the Railroad Street down between the Route 1 and the river, Dow Siding Road, a very small section of road down by the Motor Inn, and also the Maysville Road on the south end of town. The limitations would be in place basically until the spring thaws occurred and all the frost is out of the ground. Up until that point, there, these roads would have limited weight restrictions on them. But vehicles that, garbage haulers would be fine to operate on their agricultural equipment that's hauling perishable goods, it would be fine to also run across these roads. One of the industries that is most likely impacted would be the timber industry. And they would just have to be careful that their loads are under that limit during the daytime basically, until the frost is out of the ground. But if the temperature is below 32 degrees, they could still run across these roads.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair will entertain a motion. Oh, sorry.
Passed at the last meeting, six to one. Wasn't taken, it was passed. Counselor Patrick voted against it.
Okay.
Six to one, it's in the minute, put your in second.
No way.
Oh, yeah.
Boy, I didn't follow that one close enough.
Sorry for occupying your time unnecessarily on there.
Well, I didn't think it was passed either.
They wanted to find out more information about it, but they did pass it.
At least you've got more information on it now.
Well, we really know what we're doing here. Well, thank you, council. Item eight C, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number two, mending the city flood hazard area regulations.
You wanna take that one?
Sure.
So, so last council meeting, we had kind of a first read of our, our pending flood hazard regulations ordinance, and there were some questions. So we did a little bit more research and we found that the community participation in the National Flood Insurance Program is voluntary. So by accepting this ordinance, you're a voluntary participant in this program. Communities that join in the NFIP, the National Flood Plane Insurance Program, agree to manage flood hazard areas by adopting the minimum regulatory standards, basically the ordinance. When, if a community chooses not to participate in the program, property owners that, in that jurisdiction are unable to purchase federal flood insurance. In addition, federal grants, loans, disaster assistance, and federal mortgage insurance are unavailable for the acquisition or construction of structures located within the flood zone. When we talk about the flood zone, we refer to 100-year flood, flood areas. That doesn't mean that they flood every 100 years. It's actually, it's often referred to as a 100-year flood or the base flood, but the land is also identified on the maps that we use as Zone A. And basically, the term doesn't mean once every 100 years. In fact, the probability of occurrence of a 1% annual chance of flood during a 30-year mortgage to a structure located in the flood zone is 26%. So that's like five times higher than having a fire at your house. So it's pretty insurance, pretty important if you're in the flood plain to have flood plain insurance. We were asked about cost, building within the flood zone will most certainly cost more. Especially if we adopt this ordinance, there are minimum standards you have to go by. So it's not that you can't develop these areas, it's that you have to develop a building that's not gonna float away off its foundation if there is a flood. You have to build a building in such a way that if the water flows in, the lowest area of the house is gonna flow out the other side either mechanically or passively. So think of a house on stilts or a house with a, with a sump pump on steroids. Anybody got, any other questions? I, I can't say how, how much it's gonna cost because we have no idea how many people plan to develop in these areas, but I can tell you that this is a voluntary program. However, these flood zones in the 100-year flood plain, they will become, as we look at our shoreline zoning ordinance, which is mandatory from the state, not voluntary, but mandatory, they will become part of our resource protection area. And so still more limitations on development in those areas.
Dave?
I mean, I see plots of land that are probably 100 acres, 200 acres. So if somebody wanted to develop, can they just separate that property? Then it's not in the purple anymore.
Sure. Basically, if they're looking for a building permit, they would come to the city office and talk to myself or our building officials. We would visually inspect it, most likely recommend that they have a licensed land surveyor look at it and place the building on the land. And that way, you're protecting your investment. If you're gonna build a quarter million dollar house, spend the 700 bucks, get a survey.
Yeah, my question really is, just because the big piece of property, it's in the, it's in the zone because part of the property is in the zone.
It touches it, right.
I mean, that doesn't mean it's gonna flood, it's probably, so what I'm saying is if you cut that property in half, then you wouldn't have to mess with all this stuff, correct?
Yeah. Really, and it's like I said, you, you wanna verify that you're not within the flood zone. I, I don't have the expertise to go there and say, "Bye, I." Your lending institution's not gonna say, "Well, Ken said so, so it's okay." So you have, you have a licensed surveyor come take a look at it. Do a boundary line survey, check out the elevation where your, your house is gonna be, and then, then you can have, you can enter into the flood plain insurance program.
So you're, I think you're right, counselor, that on the screen right now, let me change over to those that might be viewing from home, but, so the, the purple that's on the screen, that is what has been identified as the 100-year, potential 100-year risk area. And the yellow that's on the screen would be all the rest of the properties that because they have some of that purple on them, they would have to come in and check these regulations to see if any of them apply. For instance, the, the high school would be, or the area close to the high school would be subject to these regulations in that if they wanted to do anything down close to where the streams are, we'd have to check, okay, if you wanna do this, how close are you to that? And if you're close enough to that purple area, then do we need to step in and have a survey done and make sure that you're above that 100-year flood plain?
Yeah, and so what we found is there's 665 lots that somehow touch the flood plain. Some just on the edge, as Counselor Martin suggested, some fully along the rivers and along the, the Rustic and Cariboo Stream and the Little Madawaska River. So it comprises of impacted lots, right around 21 square miles, so a quarter, almost a quarter of our township. But when you, when you figure out is, in terms of how many lots are impacted, I'll have to have Penny's help for this, how many total lots, Penny? 4,000?
Yeah, 4,477 accounts, some of those are built.
Right.
You have it in your material.
Right, so about 15% of our total lots.
Okay. Tommy?
Am I one of those lots, Penny?
I can't tell.
Right, right there, right in the middle, right down, you scroll over if you could, Dennis. The other way. See, outside the box, right on the right, Grimes Road, all the way down there. No, no, all the way to the end of the map, keep going, right there. Cause I'm about 300 yards from that timeline. Now, that means I am completely in a flood zone. FEMA has, what, what does FEMA say? Cause I've had FEMA come out, or previous owner and said it's an.
That if you can verify the, the lowest entry, lowest level of your house is one foot above the flood plain, you can have that certified.
So technically, that purple blue right there would go away and I wouldn't be subject to all of this flood plain.
That would mean more of the point where your house exists. The purple, these maps are taken at a, at a humongous scale or a very, very small scale depending on your, your vantage point. So lots of times, they don't even correctly follow the river.
Procedurally, if somebody came in, if you came in and said, "I wanna develop this part of my property," Ken and Penny would look at this map and say, "All right, it looks like you might have to be considered or looking at these other regulations." If you have a certification from FEMA or a surveyor that says, "I'm not gonna be impacted and this is why," then they basically say, "Okay, we'll add that to your building permit and we'll work with you according to that documentation."
So I, so I wouldn't have to follow a lot of the stuff that's in this flood plain ordinance because FEMA.
With that certification?
With that certification, I'd just go back to being as, as if I was not in the flood plain.
Right, and you can buy flood insurance through the federal program.
It's not worth it. I, I looked, it's not. So.
It's not what?
It's not worth it, flood insurance?
Too expensive?
Well, you pay $2,000 and you get a $10,000 deductible. I mean, I'd rather just pull the gun in my furnace and go upstairs and go fishing, I guess, I don't know. I mean, they wouldn't, they, they'd only replace the drywall, they wouldn't pay to mud and tape it, they wouldn't replace tile floor, carpeting, it was a disaster, so I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be one of those people that just bites the bullet and I hope to goodness that, that river doesn't rise, so. My, my biggest thing was just making sure that if FEMA came in and, I, I don't wanna, it seems like we're adding to the hoops that people have to jump through. I mean, fourth, over 4,000 lots, you know, and, and when.
Well, not 4,000 are effective, and you just asked me how many.
Right, 15% of our total lots are effective.
And some of those, some of those streams are pretty gosh darn small. You know, Otterbrook, Cariboo Stream, and I.
And that's part of our certification. Our, our observation would be we go to the flood plain maps and maybe this isn't a 100-year flood plain. Maybe it's, it's not an A, but it's a B. So that means it's, it's still in the flood plain, but it's considered a shallow event.
I just wanna make it easier for people to come into this town and not have to jump through 50,000 different hoops to, but however, I wanna make sure they make an informed decision about their land. If we say it's there, it's there. It's a double-edged sword, you know, you, you gotta play this one really, really fine because you don't want to have people spend more money than is absolutely necessary to get things built.
Right.
You know.
And that's the individual impact, but if we had a, a big event and we had disaster assistance required.
Well, and that's the thing.
That hits the larger community.
It sounds like if we don't pass this, we don't get any disaster relief, right?
Guess what, your lending institution is still gonna require you to insure it.
To do it, yeah. Catch 22 at this point.
So what's the advantage to having this?
That's, yeah.
It doesn't help.
The advantage is that we can take advantage of federal grants, loans, disaster assistance, federal mortgage insurance and things like that. Without it, those things are not available.
So if we had another event, like the river.
When we have another event, not if.
Not if, when. If we don't pass this, then whether, we wouldn't qualify at all for any FEMA help regardless, so.
That's how I understand it.
That's the way I think too.
Ken, can I give you an example of a 160-acre lot out in the country? And 10 acres of it floods cause there's ice from the river comes up next to the field. Been doing it for thousands of years. You go 300 yards and then there's a plateau and a guy lives in a big farmhouse and he wants to build a garage and that, no way is that house in the flood zone is threatened by flood. But the guy that owns the house, because he's in the same lot that it floods down there, is he gonna have to get anything special to build a garage?
Well, again, you, you come for a building permit and we would take a look at it. And we might, the one I've seen most recent, in, in a year, I've seen one that, that are reviewed on the River Road. And at the time, Steve Wentworth was doing code enforcement, went on site and with a tape measure and a pop level, he figured out the house was above the flood plain, but he advised the owner to have it surveyed and certified. And that's precisely what I would do.
Do you have the authority to tell the gentleman that's building the garage on, next to his house that it's never gonna flood?
I, I would advise that it's surveyed and certified.
You do?
Like I said, the lending institution isn't gonna take Ken's word for it.
Okay, I'm with Tommy, this is, it just seems like another hoop that a guy has to jump through or a woman, or you know, or.
And as I suggest, we, as, as we go back and review our shoreline zoning ordinance, this is, this is no longer voluntary, but mandated. So we already restrict redevelopment in these areas.
So whether we adopt this or not, am I understanding that if somebody were to build in any of these designated areas, that their financial institution may still require that, whether the ordinance is in place or not? So it actually, there's benefit to it because of potential federal funds, but the ramifications are gonna happen whether we adopt it or not?
They're protecting their investment, so they'll, they'll require flood plain insurance or flood insurance.
And if, if we don't have this, people can't get flood insurance, is that correct?
It will cost more.
But, like, just to be clear, we've already, these have already been adopted into our ordinances. This is just amending it to be more compliant with the latest regulations, so it's, it's not like this is brand new coming to us. It's, it's already on there, this is just amending it to be more compliant with the new regs.
But in my scenario, if I decide as the property owner to divide my property into two sections and one's on the flood plain and one's the rest of it's 50 feet off the, the river, would that then take away that nuisance part?
I guess technically.
Yeah, that's my question.
It, it just sounds like we just should pass it because it's the, you know.
Well, I, I agree, I don't think we have a choice in passing it, but I've got the same scenario as you, okay? Never had a, I've never, we built a garage, we never had a problem with that. And it's never flooded, I don't think it ever will, the, it comes up on the flat land the same as, but we, when we went to get the permit, we didn't have to do anything special or anything like that. We just got the permit and built the, the garage, cause there's not gonna be any.
But now you will have to.
Well, you'd still take a look at it, I mean, and.
I, I don't know when, when this ordinance was first passed. Again, this is an update to an existing ordinance. So I don't know when you built.
As you mentioned, this is an update to our existing ordinance.
Yeah.
I only see one choice here, folks. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the flood plain ordinance as stated.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to accept the flood plain ordinance.
Was this to accept it or was this to schedule a public hearing?
Do we have to schedule a public hearing?
It's introduced.
You've already had the public hearing.
We had it in public, I remember that one, we had that last one. Right, Jane?
Yes, you did.
Thank you, give me credit, will I? Okay, moved and seconded to accept the flood plain. Is it a revision or an up, an amended or?
Revisions would be.
Revision. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you very much. Item eight D, council goals and priorities. Dennis?
Recall during the last meeting, I had three pines in your face and basically talked about all the different aspects, all the different goals of things that we have. And I asked you to complete a survey of what were your highest priorities in those different areas. And so in your packet is a summary of the results of that survey. Under public safety priorities, you had two items that received the most votes. Five out of seven voted for, and this is just alphabetical order, trying to deal more with the opioid and drug enforcement issues that we have in the community and then also addressing the public safety building. The, the next one was looking at the healthcare reimbursement changes, which gets into our, our ambulance services and trying to get things changed that way. And I guess just a quick update, Chief Susie's here. Can you tell us what's happening with? Can you tell us what's happening with that legislation on the ambulance reimbursement rates? In two minutes or less?
Under two minutes. So they've had two public hearings. It went through the first public hearing that I testified at, LD 915. It has a lot of legs right now. There's a lot of support and it has to do with not just ambulance services like for rural communities, but it has to do with ambulance services from jails and prisons, which aren't getting paid any money at all right now for those transports. So it all falls back into that Maine Care piece. It's going for a second public hearing. It went for a second public hearing. It was tabled at that time. They're doing the federal standards because Maine Care is not just monies from the state of Maine. Maine Care is also balanced monies out of the federal government off the Medicare system. So Maine will put in a percentage and Medicare will put in a percentage. It has a lot of legs and it's looking like they actually are gonna go after mirroring Medicare on it, which would be a 60%, 40% increase, 40% increase.
So just to point out, Chief Susi was appointed by all of the other chiefs in the state to go down and represent the fire and EMS departments and testify before the Capitol. So he did a good job with that. We're definitely advocating for that. Under infrastructure, we have six out of the seven voted for prioritizing sidewalks and pedestrian safety as well as trying to finalize the streetlights conversion to LEDs. And so I'm still, I received some information back from AMRA, or not from AMRA, but from RealTerm on that. And I'm hoping that'll be ready for your next agenda for discussion. Just so the council's aware and the public's aware, the RealTerm was able to install some test lights. If you go over to the library tonight and you look out on Main Street, you'll see two lights that seem quite a bit brighter than all the other lights around. And so the really bright one is the 4,000 Kelvin light. And the other one is a 3,000 Kelvin light, which the council has discussed would be the preferred lighting if we were to move forward with this project. Receiving the third place was the High Street Reconstruction and moving that forward. And then also looking at facility maintenance and audits and plans for each of the buildings. And the River Road Reconstruction and also that rounds out the ones that received the majority of the votes under infrastructure. As far as administration priorities, again, six out of seven said union contract negotiations. We know that that's a major priority. We have to get done this year. Also, there was five out of seven that said you wanted to look at the budget preparation process and changes with that. So we'll need to have some discussion where you want to go with those changes, what you want to see that way. And then we also have the non-union compensation policy rounded out the majority saying those were priorities there. As far as economic development priorities, you had six out of the seven wanted to make sure that the businesses, individual businesses were being visited each month. The assumption being that we're going in there, we're finding out what their concerns are, what their needs are, what we can do as a community to help them out. And so we can be doing that. Also, five out of seven said the new branding and marketing campaign. I know that Christina's been working on that for quite some time and she's got some ideas that we can bring back to the council another time. Also downtown revitalization and a sure site program. Again, a sure site program is basically getting a listing of the properties that are ready for development or ready for occupation or occupancy and providing the information on what's the sale price, what's the lease price, what are utilities there and beginning to package that information together. Okay. The, as far as community development priorities, we had the blight removal project, specifically the Bird's Eye, continuing to work on that, getting that cleaned up. We have the general plan update, which I know Ken Murchison's been, he's put a calendar together for that and talking with the planning board about it. Looking at the H from the Community Plan and which was mentioned earlier today with Bill Flag. Also looking at zoning regulation rewrite. We tentatively had that on your agenda for tonight, but as I got into it, I saw there were several things in there that we really need to kick back to the planning board and have some more discussion on. And so we'll plan to do that. The last area was the leisure services priorities. This, there was a lot of four out of sevens with this. So we had the Collins Pond Dam and Trail System, trying to get that rebuilt so we can get water back in the pond. The Library Business Resource Center, continuing to build that up and work on that. The library programs, which seem to be doing really well right now. And maybe since Hope's here, would you mind just sharing what you'd shared with the department heads in the meeting about the reports?
Oh, um, yeah. Every year I have to give this massively giant report to the state, Main State Library, who then in turn shares it with the federal government to decide how valuable libraries are, et cetera, et cetera. And as I was filling out the report, I got a call from Jenny at the Main State Library and she said, "Hope, are your numbers right?" And I said, "Yeah, what do you mean?" And she's like, "You've almost doubled the number of library visits in one year." From 2017 to the end of 2018, you've almost doubled them. And I said, "Yeah." And she goes, "Are you padding the numbers?" I said, "No, I have a counter. Would you like me to send you, you know, a copy of the counter?" And she's like, "Yeah, would you? Sure. Would you like me?" I said, "You know, is there anything else?" And she says, "Well, what about programs? Your program attendance is through the roof." I said, "I can send you copies of the schedule. I mean, I got everything on spreadsheets. I share them with you every month." And she said, "Yeah, I literally need to attach these to this report or the federal government's gonna freak out." In a good way. And she said, "What are you guys doing?" And I said, "We're listening to the community. We throw something out there. We say, 'Do you like it?' They say, 'Yes,' we continue." They say, "Meh." We think, "Okay, can we revamp it or what can we do?" Her and I talked about Facebook events, marketing. Mr. Gahn said, "You know, what are you doing differently?" "Oh, I have this whole list of, you know, radio stations and TV and the city and, you know, just sending out press wherever I can, anybody who will tell anybody else about it, go for it." And yeah, she wanted verification on everything. So not only did I have to answer their 3,400 questions, then I had to send verification on it. But it was a really good thing because she's like, "This is amazing." She said, "This is amazing. I want to take this and share it with other people." So yay for us.
So other items that we're looking at, as far as the majority of the council saying was a high priority, working to go after additional NBRC, Northern Border Region Commission funding. It's a grant funding that is available. And looking at, Mr. Markey and I have talked and there's been some discussion with other communities about trying to pool together an application to improve the wayfinding signage, overall signage on the trail system to help people be able to get around the county as they're out there on the 100 plus acres or miles of trails. So. We also have the Teague Park reconstruction. That we know is a priority. It has to be done by September 19th. Was it 20th?
September 19th of this year and so does Syncog Park as well. And it's all about the same, same program.
And so I know that Mr. Markey's been trying to light a fire under the school district and the school project to make sure that that's all taken care of and work very closely with them on that construction. Hopefully not delay that, but get out of it what we were promised as a community and what's in the approved plans at this point. And so we can continue to focus on that. So those are the, those are the ones where the majority of the council said, yes, we want to make sure these are priorities. Obviously, there was some voting for other items as well. And I believe the intent was that based on these priorities, my personal review at the end of the year would be based on some of this. And I can go back and add these to the list of how well did the manager do about getting these things taken care of. Obviously, I have to work with my staff and we'll continue to work and do the best that we can. But if the council's good with these priorities, these are the ones that we'll attack the hardest this year. Unless there's any other comments or questions.
I have one quick question. What happens if Teague Park and Syncog do not get done by September 19th or 20th?
Gary Markey, Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. I've asked that question with the director that runs the National Park Program and he's gonna look into it. He does not know if there's, if there's gonna be penalties, like on a regular construction job after an end date if it's not finished. He is gonna look into it. Matter of fact, he's coming up tomorrow to do a conference. So we are gonna discuss that in depth. They've had three years or two, two years and several months now. They signed the contract over in 2016 to start this project. So three years is a pretty big window to do all of this. I think there was a little bit of lack of communication on a couple ends and that's where we're, that's where we're at right now. So hopefully tomorrow I'll be able to get some more information and I will pass it on to Manager Marquer so he can pass it on to you guys so we can get it taken care of. Majority of the park will be built this summer. I'm not quite sure exactly on National Park Services part that it has to be open and complete 100%. That, I don't know. The rules and regulations on this is pretty in-depth. So those are questions I'm gonna ask Mr. Beck tomorrow and I'll get those answers and I'll get those to you guys.
I just don't want to be put through the back burner.
No, I've been-
It's my biggest concern.
They know that there's a priority.
Any other questions to Gary? Gary, anything the council needs to do to help you on this quest for getting these parks done?
No, I think-
I mean, there's nothing that's being held up on our end.
No, no. We've, the city has done all of their, their part by giving up the park. And then that's where it took almost, you know, eight months for them to work it out with National Park Service and that's where it's taken a long, long time. A lot of red tape on the federal end. We have done our part. They understand what we've done is correct. National Park Service says, whatever you deem, it has to be conveyed back to what you've given up. So we will receive everything that we gave up. We will receive it in the new park. It's just the timeline. And the contractor knows and they've given an outline as to what's going on. Hopefully in the next few weeks, I spoke to the contractor beginning of last week. He's thinking that the Syncog building should be coming down in the next two weeks-ish. So.
I didn't realize the Syncog. Is that because it was part of the land swap?
It's part of the land swap. What it was, they valued Teague Park. When National Park Service came in and they said, "We want to know what the value of Teague Park is." They did a Yellow Book appraisal was what it was called. Just the land value. And then we gave them the option of the conveyed piece of property that we want to have, which was the Learning Center. The Learning Center's property value was less than Teague Park's value. So they had to find some other properties. That what, and it has to be properties that are not already developed as in a park. Now, it could have been wetlands. They could have given us wetlands. So be thankful they did not give us any wetlands. Because you cannot develop any, you cannot develop wetland. So Syncog got thrown under the proverbial bus, so to speak, and still wasn't that value of that land was still not enough. But there's a gentleman behind that piece of property that his, he donated to the project. So that's what kicked it in. So value wise and again, it was very clear in National Park Services description, does not have to be all one encompassing piece of property. It could be several different locations. And it's a way to get Sync, the Syncog building taken down and turned into a usable park for the community. As of right now, it's deemed unsafe to be even in the dooryard over there. So it's, that's why that piece of property has been put into the consideration in this project. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Before Gary goes, I just wanted to tell you and Roland and all them what great job you guys did on the trails all winter long. From what I heard, they were just pristine and you guys worked tirelessly on those trails and-
Yeah, it was a good winter. It's, and I'll be the first, thank you. And I'll let those guys know. And I'll be the first to say it needs to go away now. It's been a long winter.
Okay, Dennis? Unless there's any other questions or comments from the council?
Any other questions or comments? So you're gonna pick a lot?
No, I just want everybody to understand that the charter lists all the duties that the manager has, things he's responsible for, and it's quite a list. So it's not like he's looking for something to do. So, you know, we shouldn't overburden, is what I mean.
No, we were gonna, I was gonna head down that road of picking top three of each one. Let's just take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, these are all things that we have been nibbling at or we have already been going full steam after. And so it's recognizing that the council wants to make sure these things are looked at. We'll all add these to the manager's report and be able to say a little bit of progress on each one. And we'll do our best. Some of these we think will happen a little bit easier. We know things are already rolling. Some of it, we're gonna have to have a little more input from the council, such as the new branding and marketing effort. That's gonna probably take a discussion with the council and see the ideas that have been coming out. Get your input, get some public input. And that's gonna be a little more time intensive. But we'll, we'll look at these. I'll talk with the department heads about these and see where are we at? What do we need to have a little more input on and how can we move things forward?
But to go to Mr. Martin's point, I have no problem with you taking two, three at the most of each area and focusing on them. Not that the ones that we're not putting on can't come back on at a future council or can't be looked at if things come up. But take the, like, there's some that you've already, a majority of these we've already done, the top ones. So I mean, just put those in. And you were gonna put a list of questions that we are going to answer on December 20, on the first meeting in December during the job evaluation. Yeah. Go ahead. Narrow it now. Thank you.
Item number nine, City Manager's Report. Dennis.
I think I've already covered some of these. As I mentioned, the LED streetlight situation now, the lights have been installed. River Road, they're finalizing the designs for that. They're still anticipating that we'll go out to bid in a couple of weeks. And we do need to finalize the financing aspect of that and the discussion around that. And there's also at least one other property that we need to discuss and we recommend going into executive session to discuss that tonight. The Bird's Eye Cleanup, we're still waiting for the snow to go away and moving forward with that. Floridale Park, Penny was successful in that she was able to find more information at the county offices, but still not all the information that we were hoping to find. And so we're still doing some digging on the Floridale Park. The Hilltop Senior Living, they're continuing to do some demolition work there. Dunkin' Donuts went to the planning board again and-
We're actually gonna strike you from the agenda.
Okay. So we're still waiting on additional information from-
They've been verbal on the MDO transportation plan, but they don't have the documentation.
We also still have an opportunity or a discussion, probably a work session on the senior homestead tax credit program, what the council's feelings are that way. There are several bills before the legislature this year that would increase the homestead tax credit. tax credit for seniors. And so it may be as, as the legislation or the legislative session wraps up, we can bring back updates to the council and then you can decide if you want to implement a city level program as well or what's happened there. Still waiting on a response on some of the pellet boiler system information. If there's any other questions you want me to report on tonight, we can do that.
Yeah, I received an email and I think Joan did too about Florida. Did you all get one?
Yeah.
And that the person was, was fine with us trying to sell, but he wanted it to go to the highest bidder and not be given to somebody for it all. So, and I think that's what we would more also, just to let that person know.
Isn't that the way we get disperse of property? All property that's owned by the city that the council feels that needs to be sold goes out to bid, right? So that's just, that's just how we need to do things.
Unless it's tax acquired, then there's a whole other process, but, right?
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Number 10, Discussion by Mayor and Council Members. Council members, any discussion? Joan?
I have a couple. First one's just quick on the report from the airport. That there is going to be Wings and Wheels event on the 24th and it said, "City Manager to lower the cost of fuel for the day." Okay, because I know we did it last year, but it was because we needed to use up some of it. So what are you doing there? Are you, are you lowering it below what we paid for it? Or are you going to? I'm not in favor of lowering it, lowering it below what we paid for. I don't think that that should be done because that's paid for with taxes.
So with, with any retail establishment, you have your markup and you have your sales price, right?
Yeah.
And essentially it's the same thing with here. Last year when we did the, the markdown, there was a lot of interest that we got. There was a lot of people that came in. We did, we sold a lot of fuel.
Right.
We also, that carried over into the weeks afterward. We had people flying in or that called me and said, "Hey, I heard about your event. We want to come up to your site." It was, it piqued the interest and it got people to come to the airport. So what they're talking is again, if we were to drop the price of the fuel a little bit below, yes, below what we paid for it to get the interest going. Through with the rest of the year, we have our markup and so we're definitely making up.
You're making up what you're losing to that?
Yes. Yes.
And the other thing that I want, I, I still, I'm going to go back to this, the pantry, the food pantry. This needs to be resolved. It's my understanding that you're not totally moved in there, right? I mean, your, your food is scattered, right?
We're not moved in anywhere at all.
So your food is scattered in one place or another place or something like that and you can't, you can't open just like that for...
No, we're closed.
Right. And in order to get this up and going, and you've had a lot of people calling and there's a lot of people not getting any service, I, I don't think that we can keep putting this off. I think we need to resolve this tonight and, and let them...
It's almost sort of a crisis that we didn't realize in the food pantry, you know, people that aren't receiving the services or nowhere to operate in. It's hinging on a couple of things. I mean, like, I said the last meeting and I voted for the lease, but we should be responsible to fix those bathrooms, whether or not we rent, sell, or whatever the deal is. If we can move forward with that, get that aspect out of the way and then allow them to...
Well, I...
And it was considerably cheaper, I believe, than $7,000.
Yeah, the, the bits have come, you know, lower than that, but still have the city fix the bathrooms. They're willing to pay the, the rent, the going rent. Take it out of the, the lease agreement that you're responsible for the roof and the windows and I mean, that, that to me doesn't make sense at all unless you, unless you caused the problem. I don't think you should be, you know, responsible for everything else that's going on. And if there's some time involved in getting the bathroom fixed, I think there's a working bathroom in there, isn't there down further or something? Isn't there one bathroom?
That's in the County Bag area.
Yeah.
That's in their lease area.
So maybe, you know, you could use something like that until the bathrooms get fixed, but I know, I know. But do you want to wait until, you know, because if you wait until the actual bathroom gets fixed, you may be looking at another couple of weeks or something. So it's up to you, but you know, if you want to get this resolved so that you can start moving in and start...
You'll, you'll still have a... Sorry. After the last city council meeting, we learned. Everybody grab the microphone.
So even if you do that, it still has to go to plans review for the fire marshal because it's public coming in and out. That's four to six weeks on top of that. They can't just move in and open. It'll have to go to plans review because it's a public, it'll be open to the public.
At the state level.
At the state level, not me. At, at the state level.
So, so real quick, sorry, real quick, chief. It doesn't matter if we get everything ready for Ms. Aiken and company and the, the pantry. They still have to wait 46 weeks for the fire marshal?
Whatever that, I don't, counselor, I don't know what that time is. Right now is kind of early, but you figure they're already having grass fires in Southern Maine, so people are already starting to build. So once they can start to build and do that down there, plans get backed up in Augusta.
So what, what I'm getting at is they can't move in unless the state fire marshal comes up and okay's them.
The Plans Review Board in Augusta reviews their blueprint for, for that.
So it, it doesn't matter what we decide?
But you would have to have all this in place as part of that as well.
But...
So there, maybe if I, I might share.
That doesn't make sense.
So there's a couple of things that have happened since the last meeting. One is mentioned, we did get some pricing back on fixing the restrooms. We found out that the, the men's restroom that's in there is, the plumbing is sound. Is that right, Ken? For the toilets. It would take less to repair the men's restroom than the ladies restroom, which is the one closer to their tenant space. The bid that came in was roughly $1,500.
So what we found is when we pressurized the system, the, the piping that was not on the exterior wall was still sound. The piping on the exterior wall, there was holes in it somewhere in the wall. So what was proposed is, is we could renovate basically the bathroom stalls, that's on the inside side, which didn't freeze, and then run new lines to the sinks and bring them back online that way.
So maybe, let me just interrupt there. So we have a, we have a, a solution and we have a design and we have a cost, but Chief Sucey is right, that has to go to the state. They have to approve the plans. They have to say, yes, this is, this is okay to redo these bathrooms this way. So there's things from the city side with this building that we have to deal with because of the regulatory, regulatory framework that we have in place. Now, Ken can probably also speak to what's, is what he's been discussing from his other on the side work with the food pantry and with the, the soup kitchen.
Well, well, I can say from, from my board of directors on, on the Kibbutz Bread Life Kitchen is that, that, that we've pledged our support to the pantry in any way we can. So if, if, if it becomes decided that a lease is unwieldy or if it's going to be an extended period of time before we can come on to the lease, we fully tend to help out where we can, to the point that we, we would help them do their distribution from our side. So what that would look like, I don't know. I don't know what that would look like right now, but we do have a room that's empty. We could actually move their food in storage onsite. Their collection, their, their collection, weekly collection would have to be distributed because we don't have room for freezers. But it's possible that we could get it up and running.
I just, it's my belief that this majority, overwhelming majority of this council wants to fix those bathrooms in Mecon, 60 access highway. We want to offer you for a dollar square foot, go put your stor, stuff in storage. It's dry. You're not open to the public until we can get those bathrooms figured out. And what do you know, just tonight, brand new news comes, we got to get the state involved. Do you see, this is an ever-evolving deal. I appreciate Ken's offer. You could still store it at our place and then take it up our place, 60 access highway, and you could still take it up and distribute it up there. So we want to, or whatever facility you can, but we just can't...
Actually, credit should go out to Dixie Shaw at Catholic Charities because she stepped up big and they're storing everything at her place right now. They palletized it, they wrapped it in plastic, they're saving it aside for them.
Okay.
The community is, is helping out.
Yeah. Dave?
Would it be possible for these people to move in and just meet their clients at the door? I mean, the weather will improve someday. Meet them at the door, maybe have a tent, whatever. So you meet them at the door and you say, "Well, I don't know what you guys do, but whatever you need." And then you go back in and you bring it to them. It might be a little inconvenient for a while, but then you don't need a bathroom and you don't, I don't know if that's feasible.
So I'm sure you might, you probably have already looked at this and I don't know off the top of my head, but is there another property that the city owns that may be more suitable at this time that we would be able to get faster access to?
We haven't happened upon it. We, we reached out to the other agencies around town that, that do have vacant buildings, but nothing, nothing that they wanted the liability of having anyone in on.
So has the process of getting this information to the state taken place or is it being initiated? I guess it's the...
At this point, Ken has the design for what needs to be done.
And that's, that's got to go.
So there's like an eight-page step by step and we're building it.
Could we, could we talk to our senator and representative and say, "Look, this is an emergency. Could you pull some strings and get that outfit to, to look at this as soon as possible?"
Yeah, and we, we'll talk to the state as well and, and try to pull as many, not strings, but try to...
It's a process.
Get it to the top of the list as fast as we can.
I think when you bring the fire marshal into the conversation and, and he'll realize that there's, you know, urgency to it.
Could you do that in person outside?
Did you have to do this for, for boat break construction? Did you have to do this for County Bag? Did you have to do all this?
I was in around when those grievances were, were arrived at, so...
And probably not because they're not servicing the public. It's storage.
It's storage.
Well, there's a construction building in there, so I don't know.
Yeah. It's just storage. It's just storage.
It's storage.
Dave?
The way I understand it, if we're going to change what we did last meeting, Joan and I can't make a motion because we were not on, on the supporting side. Is that correct?
We want to redo the motion.
Well, what do we, okay. I'm not going to, if you want to make another motion, go ahead.
I am not going to make one just to, to go ahead and start to fix the bathrooms, but we have, for the quote we have under our account, but if we can't, we can't go forward with that until we get that plan back.
They'll get to fix it again. That needs to be a place.
It needs to be, yeah.
So...
So that, I think the term, the specific term that you're talking about in the lease agreement was that the lessee, in this case, the food pantry, was responsible for repairing the bathrooms. And if the, if the council's agreeable, that that's not the case anymore, the city will repair those bathrooms. If you want, just authorize me to make that, change into that lease agreement, we can do that.
I'll make that a motion.
Yeah, I also want to amend the motion or have you amend the motion, you can do that, to, you know, not have them responsible for stuff that they're not responsible for, like if the wear and tear of the, you know, if they...
Typical, please.
Well, you see, now we're starting to get into writing a new contract and we just wanted to get them right in that building to get the food out of the wet, out of the wet. That's what, that's what the intent was. And I have no objections to rewriting the contract to meet your needs, like you were just saying. They could sign it right now. We're giving our word, kind of giving our word, we're going to fix the bathrooms. Would give us a time to rewrite the contract because that same contract's going to go to every other vendor that come, or tenant that might come in there. It's kind of a standard deal. And the contract, the contract they sign now says if they want to build their bathroom in a certain spot, they're going to be responsible. But that's not saying we can't fix it, a bathroom, and meet their needs. We're not, we're not precluding that. So, and we, I think, have agreed to fix the bathrooms.
Why don't we just let them move in until we have a new one written and they can sign that one? I mean, we're asking them to trust that, so we can trust them just as much.
It, it's also not just a matter of them being in there and not letting the public in. It's that you have employees onsite that are going to be in that space for given periods of time. And by building codes, they have to have access to functional bathrooms and wash areas, which they don't right now. And so that's one of the things we, we can't just say, "Okay, well, let you just move everything in and start doing the normal operations." And we told them, yes, you could go in there and start storing your stuff, but as far as normal operations and having employees on the site, can't do that till we've got those citizens.
They're not employees, they're volunteers.
They are employees of the establishment, even if they're not paid.
The liability rests on, I, I know, I, I've been down this route. When, when we, when we did a charity deal down in Jamaica, Queens, a couple of organizations I was part of, it's still liable. You know, anybody, anything happened down there? I'm willing to give it a wink and a nod and let them move their food in. I just want to let everyone know. Yep. And, and just, you know, just go move the food in. And don't distribute it from there. And we'll get these bathrooms up and running as quick as we can. The state will be here as quick as we can.
You have a motion. Did anybody second it?
I did.
Okay, what was the motion?
Fix the bathroom.
Fix the bathroom and then remove it from the contract or what? The rest of it, leave the sayings. I don't want them to, we're going to fix the bathrooms.
That's all I have is, should we fill the bathroom? Be simple.
And, yeah, and change...
Spray new contractor.
I mean, if the roof leaks on them, that's not their fault. That whole paragraph in there that said, "You're responsible for any damage or anything drawing in your area," that's not necessarily correct. I mean, anything you caused, you fix. Yeah. That's, I think, what you're saying.
And that's standard contract language that we have for all the other tenants as well, that they're responsible for their roof over their, their areas.
They agreed to it.
You just had, you just had motion to fix the bathrooms to be careful and then we can deal with the contract, wasn't it, about its meaning, correct?
Yes.
The motion, the city goes ahead and starts fixing those bathrooms. We're going through the process at that.
That's what we're doing. But, okay, motion made, seconded, to authorize what we're already doing. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
I thought the subject was... Uh, one, one real...
Well, we, we're not off of this subject yet because now we got to, we still got to work on this contract then to address the roof and the other things that this thing should read. Could you present us with a example of a new contract at the next city council meeting?
Yeah.
For this building that addresses what Joan brought up at the first time we brought this issue up? About windows and the roof and ceilings and stuff like that. And I want the council to review it before we start, before we approve it. That's all I'm asking. I don't want to go down blindly. Tom? Ken and I went to this building. This building is not as bad as it sounds. $7,000 for the bathroom, I don't know where that came up, it's ridiculous. This building's got some good bones. I'd like to know where this place is leaking. I want just, I want somebody to bring me in there, point and say, "That's where it's leaking." Because this is ridiculous. We are not managing the city-owned property and I don't know how many times I've got to say this, but these outrageous numbers and the, you know, saying we're money hungry and stuff like that. Come on, guys. We've got to do a preventative maintenance plan on every single property and I'm going to talk to the mayor, but I want that in a workshop or something because it's not as bad as it really is and I want the community to know. It's not, that building is not as bad as what was presented the last meeting. And to come...
And to come now and find out a $7,000 job is actually a $1,500 job. I think everybody's eyes bugged out last time and said, "$7,000, holy cow." Well, we need to get accurate facts and we need to have them in order to make an informed decision at this table. And until that happens, we cannot help these poor people. And I think that's what the biggest thing was last time, why we went with the generic contract, because we were told it was gonna say $7,000 to fix a bathroom. Come on, guys. We need to do better. We, we've got to, and that's...
Well, I think that was the purpose of just slowing the process down.
Absolutely.
So that the $7,000, we didn't run right out and spend $7,000 at the first drop of a hat here. And we took the time. And it's unfortunate that we have to slow the process down and take the heat for not thinking we're some kind of, but, Tom, that's the way, if you decide to get on the council, you, you take the hits.
I get it. So we can also have informed decisions and we could have done something that way.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Anything else? Number 11, staff reports and committees?
Unless you have any questions about the materials that went in your packet or of the department heads that are here, if there's anything else.
Jane, anything?
We had a very good day for Connie. Last day here for 33 plus one day here at Caribou City Office. We partied hearty most of the day and, you know, before noon, her keys were turned in and her drawer was cashed out. And she partied the rest of the day. It was very good.
It was an excellent deal that you put on today. Thank you very much.
We had a good luncheon and, and it was very nice. Judy Ann Coro came in, the retired clerk, and...
Good.
It was really nice.
It's good. Okay, nothing else from the council then? The chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Who'll move?
To discuss real estate and an economic development issue. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much and everyone have a great evening.
Please don't go away.